I'd like to call the work session to order for January 13, 2025. City Clerk, please read the roll.
Director Dr. Bruce Leck, that all members are present.
Okay, thank you. We have two items on the agenda tonight. Would like to remind council that staff will be pausing every so often to answer any questions. First item is the overview of city council meetings, procedures, and guidelines. We will hear from several presenters tonight. City Manager Wynette Reed can kick us off. The last item is the 2025 state and federal legislative agenda. You've got Gina Kerico, Chief Government Affairs Officer, will present for them. Before we start, first, I just want to kick a few things off. I know we have some new members here. We've got a new team in place. And a lot of this is going to be a repeat, so please bear with me. City emails. Please ask everybody to use their city emails. Don't use any personal, because if they ever do a request on you and you're using city email, your personal emails, it opens up all your personal emails. So be careful. Do not use any personal emails when corresponding to anybody with city business. Okay? Also, potential, every once in a while, you'll get some potential information sent to you for a meeting, maybe. That's why you want to check regularly. For example, a city attorney has sent out the actual rulings of both the, what is it, the attorney for the state and also sent out the copy of the ruling for the League of Cities. Hopefully, you all had a chance to read that and review that, so the discussion when we get into the next meeting will be up and running. Second thing is, if you please use your calendar, if you would please, a lot of times, setting things up with us to make sure we don't get quorum. And we've got a place you can put personal on all of it, so you can block all of that out that's personal. Nobody needs to know what your personal life is. But if it's anything on city, because we had something last year in which we had to send people out because we had quorum and it wasn't notified, so please, just put anything that's with city on there, even if you think, okay, even if you think that you may be there, put it on there. That way, it's always better to err on the side of caution, then we can always publicize that there'll be a quorum. That's not a big deal. Last but not least, questions on the council agenda, and I know, I think they're going to cover it tonight. If you would please, when you read the agenda, if you have any questions, reach out to the staff. Now, it doesn't mean you can't ask the question. It's just that hopefully, they're prepped to answer the question for you when you answer it in council meeting, so there's no "gotcha" type of stuff. Does that make sense, everybody? Okay? With that, I want to borrow a text from Bill and Ted's Excellent Adventure. Any of you have ever seen that. Be excellent to yourselves and to staff. With that, I turn it over to the presenters.
All right. Thank you, Mayor, and welcome to 2025. It's great to see all of you here, and I thought it might be a good time, not only with new council members, but a time for all of us to review some items that are important to how we operate, how council operates, how staff operates, and that interaction. So tonight, we will be going over the city council meeting rules of procedure, which then you will need to adopt. I think we have that on the 27th. Open meeting law, ethics, government relations system, which I will be addressing, and then council support, which is one of my goals, is to define what the council assistants do and what their job duties are and how we interact with them. So that is on my goals, to have that discussion. After that, then Jenna Kerico will be doing the legislative update. So that is necessary, because they're kicking off a brand-new session down at the state, so it's time to have that conversation. So, any questions on any of that before we begin? I don't see any. So this is what I call setting the table for the year. So I'm going to let Jasmine kick it off with the council meeting rules of procedure.
Thank you, Wynette. Good evening, Mayor, city council members. My name is Jasmine Pernicano, acting city clerk. We're going to kick off tonight by reviewing the city council meeting rules of procedure, and many of you have been living out this document since you started in your role, so this will be a refresher to you and also an opportunity to introduce it to our new council members. So, what exactly are these rules? Think of these rules as the nuts and bolts that help keep our meetings organized, efficient, and functional. We will be going over key elements of the rules tonight, but the full document has been provided to you as part of the council action report. Tonight, we'll be going over the types of meetings we hold, such as regular meetings, special meetings, and work sessions. We will be talking about the agenda, like the one before you, outlining what will be discussed tonight, listing the order of business. We will also look at how meetings are conducted, roles and responsibilities, and also review the process for motions and voting procedures. Let's take a look at some of the background and history to how we've got here. Goodyear City Charter and portions of city code require that the council adopt its own rules of procedures for conducting their meeting. City Council first adopted the meeting's rules of procedure by resolution on August 14, 2000, and has since been modified several times over the years. The last comprehensive update was done in 2018 with a minor revision last October. Moving on to our types of meetings we hold, each year by November 1, the council reviews and approves the meeting calendar for the upcoming year. You have in front of you a laminated copy of the adopted 2025 council meeting calendar for your use. That's for you to take with you. In general, regular meetings are held each month in the council chambers on Monday starting at 5:00 p.m. The rules allow for the flexibility in date, time, and location, so long as 24-hour notice is always provided. Special meetings may be scheduled when there's a need to address city business in a timely manner. Work sessions are designed for presentations and discussions on topics where council input, feedback, and direction are needed. Like tonight, no formal action or voting takes place during a work session. Typically, work sessions are held on the first and third Monday of each month and may be included on the same night as a regular or special meeting. Now let's run through the order of business as you see it on the agenda. We will begin each meeting, as we did just moments ago, with the mayor calling the meeting to order, followed by roll call. We must have a quorum of the council for any meeting to begin. For a seven-body council, we would need four members' presence to start the meeting. During regular meetings, we will use the voting software, where you can acknowledge your presence on the tablet. And if I may draw your attention over here, it looks something like this, where you will select your presence at the dais. The mayor, who is the presiding officer over our meetings, shall acknowledge the council members present and may ask for a motion or a second and a second to excuse those council members absent. Since work sessions are non-voting meetings, the mayor will recognize who is absent for the record. Now, the remaining of these items we're going to go through are, will appear on our regular meeting agendas. Public comments is the designated time on our regular meetings for members of the public to address the council on non-agenda items. Comments are limited to three minutes, however, the rules allow for the time to be modified by the mayor. In order to comply with Arizona's open meeting law, which we'll hear about shortly from our city attorney, at the conclusion of public comments, council members may thank the speaker, respond to criticism, may ask staff to review the matter, or may ask that the matter be placed on a future agenda. No action is taken. Staff may communicate information to the city council through a brief presentation to inform or prepare them for upcoming items, community activities, or recognize certain achievements. These items will appear under the communications item portion of the agenda. Moving on to our consent agenda, this is a group of items that are considered routine or have been previously discussed by council and can be voted on as a single package. These items typically don't require individual discussion. If anyone wants to discuss an item on the consent agenda, it can be polled and considered separately. If you only wish to comment on an item, you may use your Request to Speak icon on the tablet, and the mayor will call you on the order received. This may look familiar to most of you, but the Request to Speak icon, excuse me, is located down here, and each of you will have a tablet at your seat at the dais. Public hearings are a formal opportunity for the public to provide input on specific issue or proposals. Public hearings are required by law when certain decisions, like zoning changes or new regulations, might impact the community. These are often more structured and have specific legal requirements for noticing and participation. Business items typically have discussion and decisions on significant projects, new initiatives, or items of community interest. These differ from routine consent items and often involve staff presentations for informed decision-making. Public comments on agendized items can be made at each time the item is heard and are also limited to three minutes. Applicants are limited to 10 minutes for any presentation. Information items during this portion of the meeting, council and the city manager may report on various events taking place in the city, may make requests for information or future agenda items. No action is taken. Executive session, the council may vote to enter into an executive session only for purposes outlined in statute. An adjournment is the formal ending of a meeting. Once all agenda items have been discussed or acted upon, the meeting is adjourned by the mayor, and the time is recorded in the minutes. Now let's talk about our rules and responsibilities. The rules outline expectations for council staff and the public to ensure orderly and respectful meetings. The city clerk is responsible for preparing and posting meeting notices and agendas at least 24 hours before the scheduled meeting, as required by open meeting law. However, the city typically posts agendas five days in advance of council meetings to provide sufficient time for council and the public to review the agenda and associated materials. If an item needs to be added or updated after an agenda has been posted, an amended agenda will be issued, ensuring it is posted no less than 24 hours before the meeting. With the exception of executive session, all regular meetings, special meetings, and work sessions are open to the public. As I mentioned earlier, we have a quorum of the council before, we must have a quorum of the council before any action can take place. The presiding officer is provided by city charter, is our mayor, or in the absence of the mayor is the vice mayor. The presiding officer is responsible for running the meeting, recognizing speakers, managing discussion and facilitating votes. Any council member, city staff, or member of the public desiring to speak must be first recognized by the presiding officer. As I showed you earlier, the tablet allows for you to click the Request to Speak icon on any item, and the mayor will call on you on the order received. The city attorney serves as the parliamentarian for all city council meetings and provides guidance to the presiding officer on the rules of procedure to help clarify any process. So building on the context of meetings, let's now look at the process for handling our most commonly-used motions during our meetings. Today, we're going to highlight three, however, the rules outline additional motions. So typically during a meeting, the presiding officer will ask for a motion and a second to approve the recommendation before any discussion takes place. As I previously mentioned, we use the electronic voting system to process our motions. Similarly, on this screen that I have in front of me, the icon in orange is how you make the motion, and then, once that is done, an additional icon will appear to second. Once discussion concludes, the motion shall be voted on by council and requires a simple majority vote to pass, unless a higher standard is required by law. In most cases, a simple majority is sufficient. However, in some situations, may require a supermajority vote, as specified by Arizona law. For example, if 20% or more of affected property owners protest a zoning change, state law requires three-quarters supermajority vote, six out of the seven council members, for approval. If the vote on a motion is tied or does not receive simple majority vote, the motion fails. To amend a motion, bear with me, the original mover and seconder can do so without requiring a vote on the original motion. An amendment can only modify the intent of the original motion. The motion to amend must be voted on first, followed by the vain motion as amended. A motion to table can be used to temporarily suspend discussion on an item, deferring it to a later meeting. Let's move on to voting methods and the rules around abstentions. Votes may be cast via voice, roll call, electronically, ensuring each member's vote is clearly recorded. Unless required by law, the city council will cast their votes electronically through their tablet. In the bottom right-hand corner, you will see a photo that shows a sample of what you've seen on your tablet, once the voting is opened by the city clerk. When it comes to abstentions, council members must disclose the reasons for abstaining from a vote, typically due to a conflict of interest. According to the city charter, all council members present are required to vote on matters requiring formal action, as abstentions are not permitted, except in these cases. If a council member fails to vote, their vote will be counted with the majority. In the event of a tie vote, their vote will automatically be counted, excuse me.
Does it include executive sessions, or executive sessions are separate?
We don't vote in executive session.
We're not voting, right?
To move into executive session.
Like city managers pay, or that's a public vote.
Those always come out, and we vote on those in public, yes.
Bye. Just curious, thank you.
Oh, well, we're pausing there. Half a council member, you know, has Trey and Benita gotten their tablets, city tablets yet?
They are at the dais.
They're at the dais.
Yes.
No, I'm not talking about that. I mean, the actual work.
Oh, their laptops?
Laptops.
Mayor council members, I believe so, yes.
Do you have? Okay. Just want to make sure. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, they've been offered to us, a laptop.
That you're using yourself. Okay. I just want to make sure that you guys got them offered, that's all. Okay, go ahead.
Okay, as Wynette mentioned earlier, several updates have been made to the rules of procedure. Many of these updates reflect practices that have already been implemented and are now being finalized within the rules of procedure document. And the most significant change is the reorganization of the agenda order, which we went through earlier. The revision has also added flexibility to remove headings when there is no business under that section. For example, if we have no communication item, that section would be removed from the posted agenda. The updated version added a dedicated section for public hearings and formalized a 10-minute applicant presentation. Additionally, citizen comments has been renamed to public comments, and the requirement for speakers to state their home addresses has been eliminated. Instead, speakers are only asked if they are residents of Goodyear. Other general updates include removing the requirement for two monthly meetings, providing for virtual participation in meetings, excluding executive sessions, unless permitted by the city attorney, allowing meeting dates to be adjusted or canceled throughout the year, updating the city hall address, and simplifying language throughout the document. These rules are tailored specifically to Goodyear and loosely follow principles from Robert's Rules of Order. The updated rules of procedure are scheduled for adoption at the January 27, 2025 city council meeting. This concludes my portion of the presentation. I will pause for any questions before turning it over to our city attorney.
Any questions? Go ahead, Councilmember Caneau.
For clarification on work sessions, that's where there's discussion, but there should not be any indication of approval or disapproval, right? I mean, we're just talking about things. Just for, to clarify, please.
You can, Mayor and councilmembers, Councilmember Caneau, generally, it's not noticed for a vote, you should not be taking a vote, but you can give guidance to staff to put together an item to bring back for the formal public vote. But typically, we will not take a vote.
There's been times where there's been comments, "Well, I approve of this," and there was an admonishment, so just...
It's a fine line.
Okay, yeah, as many things are.
Yes.
On public comments, you gave the parameters for which you can respond. Is it only the mayor that is permitted to respond?
I will jump in on that one as well. Typically, the mayor should respond. You can respond to criticism. If you look at the guidance, the criticism should be personal in nature. And if it's personal in nature, as an individual council member, you have the right to directly respond.
Okay, very good. And then, last question. Before the adjournment is the time for the council comments, and at that time, there's anything for the city manager or future agenda items, would you explain the process for what it would take for council members to get future agenda items on?
I'll jump on that one as well. We've set up that process in the council agenda, so we have that opportunity for council to actually verbalize the gathering of consensus to place future agenda items. I'm going to touch on it in a few minutes. You can't debate or propose items typically, but you can schedule future agenda items. So it's kind of unwieldy. Our previous practice was, let's get three signatures from council members to place an item on the agenda. So we made the allowance in the agenda to place an item on a future agenda. You can't discuss the item, but you can say, "I would like the city manager to bring back item A for a future agenda." We can look for consensus from at least two other council members as far as scheduling the item for an agenda and still be in compliance with open meeting law.
And I want to add, I can also put something on the agenda, so I think, yes, you can go and get two other council members to agree with you, or I can put it on, or the mayor can put it on the agenda, so.
Yes.
And also, you'll stop at the discussion, actually starts to discuss that item, because that's a no-no.
Correct. You can say, "I'd like to..."
Just put it on, but you can't discuss it.
Correct. You can't propose it unless it's on the agenda. Correct, you can't propose it unless it's on the agenda.
Right. Anybody else? Okay, who's up next?
I am up next. And I'm going to go over just high-level open meeting law this evening and the ethics policy that the city previously adopted. Our council rules of procedure are kind of guided by the open meeting law, so you've probably heard some of what I'm going to talk about in Jasmine's performance, presentation this evening, so bear with me if I repeat things, but certainly, we write our procedures to be in compliance with Arizona State Statute. So the open meeting law is established in Arizona State Statute. It applies to the various state agencies and various subdivisions of the state, including cities, school boards, other public and quasi-public bodies. There's a pretty significant list, I, I know the agency, the Arizona Attorney General Agency Handbook's attached to tonight's presentation, that's a good resource to review for open meeting law. It's going to go into a lot more detail than the high level that I'm going to hit this evening. But basically, the state statute outlines the requirements we have as far as conducting the public's business. And the purpose of the open meeting law is to protect the public, to avoid decision-making in, in secret outside the public's purview, to protect public officials, to maintain the integrity of the government, build trust between the government and its citizens, because all the decision-making of matters that's going to affect the public is made in a public forum and it helps to keep our citizens informed. And that is the overall public policy that backs the open meeting law and in the interpretation, enforcement of the open meeting law. There are certain penalties for violation of the open meeting law and items that are passed or approved by council on violation of the open meeting law are void as a matter of law. So those are just in the back of our mind, things that we need to be aware of. I'm always available to answer questions about open meeting law. It, in, in a meeting, outside of a meeting, certainly as the mayor referenced, I'm always listening during a meeting and make sure that we're on the right course and certainly, if you, usually, if my, my hand goes up, that means we probably need to pause for a second and kind of make sure we're on the right track. Again, the overriding public policies that all decisions be made in public, all persons desiring to be permitted, desiring to attend must be allowed to attend public meetings. And we need to make allowances to make sure that the public is able to attend our meetings. And all legal actions, proposals, debates regarding legal actions need to be conducted in, in a public meeting that's open to the public. The exceptions, and Jasmine referenced it earlier, we can't have executive sessions and there are certain enumerated subject matters that the state law allows us to hold an executive session. And that's typically personal matters for legal advice, to discuss contracts that are still subject to negotiation, certain real estate matters, and certain labor negotiation matters. The law recognizes that certain matters, it's, the city is a party to a transaction and certainly needs to have the ability to discuss its position when you're negotiating a contract without having the other party hear our thought process at that point. Personal matters, we discuss certain, usually the city manager, the city attorney, the city judge, those are the personnel that the city council hires directly. You hold our personnel evaluations in executive session and have discussions regarding our contracts and performance in those matters, and the law allows that. Cannot make decisions in executive session, I think we talked about that just a few minutes ago, and certainly give direction to the employees as far as carrying out the labor or the contract negotiations, but we can't vote on those matters in the executive session, that has to be voted on in a public meeting. We are always noticed at any public meeting for legal advice. So if we're discussing a matter in a, in a public meeting and you need legal advice, legal advice can be provided in an executive session in private, so just need a motion and a second to go into executive session and we can adjourn to executive session. So what is a meeting? We, we talked about that, I think Jasmine did a little bit, it's a, it's a quorum of a public body. It's a gathering either through in-person or technological means. A quorum is a majority of a public body that's established by state statute for the city council, that is for, for council members. So anytime four council members are together and discussing a legal action item or something that may reasonably come in front of the council in the future, that can be considered to be a meeting under the purposes of the open meeting law. So the requirements are that we need to, again, we talked about public bodies, most council, certainly council committees, subcommittees, anything that says advisory in its title, under state statute, they call out advisory. Any citizens advisory group, that is a public body under the definitions of the open meeting law. So they must comply with the Arizona open meeting laws. Next one, there we go. In advance, we have to post an agenda, that has to be posted within 24 hours or 24 hours prior to the holding of the public meeting, with the exception that you can hold a public meeting if there is in fact a true emergency. Never had one that's qualified as an emergency during my time in the city, which is going back 20 something years.
The COVID...
Did we, yeah, but we didn't hold the meeting with under 24 hours. So if there's a true declared emergency and you need to, and you can't wait 24 hours, you can notice that it is an emergency meeting and hold that. That's different than an emergency proclamation that you're referencing in regards to COVID. That's the only exception to providing the 24-hour notice. You have to take minutes of the meeting and those minutes have to be posted in a draft form after the meeting and then approved at the next city council meeting. The agenda must include the location where you're going to have the meeting, date and time of the meeting, you got to follow the procedures that we just outlined, have to make accommodations for the public to attend the meeting. We usually ask 48 hours from the public if they need accommodations to attend the meeting under either the open meeting law or the ADA to arrange for visual or hearing or, or other accommodations that a specific person might need in order to attend the meeting. So that is a responsibility that we have to comply with the open meeting law. We must follow the subject matter containing the agenda, and again, I think we referenced that a little bit earlier. We can't vote on a matter unless, or discuss a matter unless it is outlined in the specific agenda. Certainly during the course of a, a meeting, we can certainly talk about an item that's clearly called out, that may lead to something that's closely related, and I think that's generally fair game under the open law, as long as it's closely related to the item we're talking about. It's usually that next logical leap that we make that's really getting us off track. Again, I view it as my duty in the course of a meeting to get us back on track if we're straying off of the posted agenda. I know it can be frustrating at times, but that is a requirement that we only discuss matters, that the public is aware that we're going to discuss during the course of the meeting. We have to take a roll call, as Jasmine outlined, we have to note who is at the meeting. Public, if they're going to address, the council is, we can require them to identify themselves for the purposes of the meeting, I already talked about the accessibility, and we do need to note the, who makes the motion in the course of a meeting and the, who makes a second. And for the purposes of state statute, they changed a few years ago, we have to record who actually votes in certain matters, so we do need to record your actual vote. Next one. And we talked a little bit about the public, they certainly always have a right to attend our meetings, that's the whole purpose of the open meeting law. We can't require them to sign in when they come into the meeting, they can, and they are not permitted to speak unless the council rules and procedures allow for the public to speak. Our rules do, so the council, the public is allowed to speak on any agenda item. We also have a call to the public, the state statute does not require us to have a call to the public. I think Jasmine kind of highlighted earlier what council can do in response to a call to the public. We can't talk about what the person brings in front of the council, you can refer to the city manager, respond to personal criticism, or ask it to be scheduled for a future agenda item. That's really all we can do in response to a call to the public, public statement.
Hold it for a second, just for the record, if we have an unruly person at the dais or who's speaking, who, and, you know, and, and just won't get off of the three minutes, what's the proper process besides me just going into recess?
You need to follow, well, the public has to follow the quorum, so if they get up and start being out of line, I would probably admonish them that we have rules of decorum, you need to follow those. The, the chair should.
Okay.
But I would ask the chair to refer to me before we take any additional items after that point. The speaker can only speak about things that are under the jurisdiction of the city council. So occasionally, you have speakers come in, not so much here, but they want to talk about things that are completely unrelated to the city and its business. That's not fair game for, for a call to the public and you can't stop the comments at that point as well.
What if the comments keep going?
I would again advise you to warn them again, and if they continue on, then you can have them remove the meeting.
I would...
I don't rather not go to remove, I'd rather call it recess so that we're not there when that action...
That's actually probably not a bad idea.
And, yes, I would recommend a recess and then our individuals in the police department can then work with the individual to...
Deescalate.
Deescalate that situation, so a recess is great, we can go behind and...
Yeah.
I would prefer the recess at that point.
We'll certainly...
Call recess and we all, we all leave.
We'll certainly collaborate on what is legally allowable at that point in time.
Just want to make sure we're covered in here, don't want to get into a position like a fellow city accountant into a position.
I would agree with you on that.
Okay.
We, we now have certain best practices and practices that are not best practices to give as guidance on that.
All right. I just want to make that for the record, to know that fortunately, we've been pretty good with that, but you never know, and I just want to make sure we've got something in place to take care of it.
And there, there are practice policies in place, I think with the staff, so...
Okay, thank you.
All right, I think we're ready for the next slide. Talked about that. Disrupting the meetings, we were going to get there. And we can limit the speaker time, we have three minutes, certainly the chair has some discretion to lengthen that or shorten that if, if need be, depending on the individual circumstances.
Can I ask a question about that, please? Is it public knowledge that we have to give them three minutes? If the mayor, if, if we have 200 people wanting to speak, is it the mayor's prerogative that he say you have two minutes to speak?
Turn your, turn your microphone.
Oh, sorry, that you have two minutes to speak rather than three, you have to give them three, is that...
You do not, you have an adopted rules of council procedure that gives the mayor discretion to make modifications depending on those circumstances, and it certainly contemplates the situation that you've outlined. You have 200 people, three minutes each may not necessarily be reasonable, so the mayor has some discretion to shorten that time period.
I just didn't know if it showed up on the board or it was on the paper that they signed, they have three minutes.
I don't believe it's on the paper, but it's in the rules of procedure.
Mayor, city council, members, Vice Mayor Campbell, it does outline three minutes, but that the, the time can be waived at the discretion of the mayor.
Okay, it's going to say, because if we didn't have that on the paper that they signed, then they, if he decided to do two minutes, then they can't come back and say, you're cutting me off or something, and I think we need to be more aware of that.
Correct, so it does outline that the time can be...
Because we don't know how many people are going to come on certain subjects.
My advice in that situation, you're going to probably know upfront, if you have a, a bunch of speaker cards, but I would recommend to the mayor that you apply that limitation uniformly throughout the, this...
Thank you.
Councilmember Hampton?
So I just want to clarify, because some people in the public, I think, get confused too, so, so we give residents three minutes, but we give developers a lot more time? Are they considered public, the presenters that are representing the, the project? Or how does that, how do, how are we, how are we communicating that to the public? That they see, they all get three minutes and they see the developer come up and they, they get a lot more time?
In, in the rules of procedure, we have specified that the applicant has an additional amount of time, since they are the applicant.
Is there a amount of time, do we just...
They have 10 minutes.
10 minutes.
Oh, okay. I've never been told that, so.
Oh, yeah, it's in the rules of procedure, the applicant has 10 minutes following the, the staff presentation, and then the, the public has three minutes.
Yeah, just so we're, I feel like sometimes the public, they're like, hey, why is this person...
Okay.
Get more time than us, and I don't know if it's ever been formally, and we don't want to get that many discussions, but there are lots of, lots of residents and back and forth always, but just something that I've been, I've heard other residents complain about, so.
Maybe it's something we can include in our...
Script.
Yeah, script, yeah.
Thank you.
Councilmember Gillis?
I understand the 200 people, if there's 200 people in the room, trying to decide an adaptable time as far as how many minutes should be spoken, but I think we need to not throw our weight around if there are only 10 people in the room, or 20, or even 30 people in the room. Everyone has the right to speak their three minutes, this is the public, we serve the public. So I think it should stick to three minutes unless there's more than, maybe we should put in, put in something and say more than 50 people or something like that. I think it should be made very clear, because I think the public realizes when they come to these meetings, they have three minutes each. So I think we should be very clear about that.
Yeah, a lot of times when they come, they're all saying the same thing for the most part. No, but from my perspective, I always ask if there's a way that if you're all saying the same thing, you can go public speaker and then I'll vote it to five or six minutes so that you have more time to get all of it in there, so.
But otherwise, three minutes a person, etc., why don't you have to have a number in the...
And I don't recall us actually limiting speech at this time, no. I, I just know it's in the rules of procedure that...
You brought it up, let's make it clear.
Good points, everybody. Next, go ahead.
Okay, let's go to the next slide. We've already talked about draft minutes, you have to prepare the draft minutes, you have to have somebody taking notes and post those following the meeting and then they're approved at the next council meeting. Just, and I say email because that's the world that the attorneys live in, takes us a while to catch up, and where I say email, you can probably substitute social media these days. It's, anytime you get a conversation of a quorum of a public body, that can constitute a meeting, and, and there's been cases in the past where public bodies have gotten crossways with, with email communications, having a, a debate or discussion about a, a legal action item prior to a meeting without the public being able to witness that or publishing the agenda. So we just remind council that email and other electronic communications can constitute a meeting under the definitions established in the Arizona open meeting laws.
Yes, go ahead.
All right, since you brought up social media, are there restrictions on council members having social media connections?
No, and I will say, that's kind of a fluid area right now as far as, some of that is First Amendment protections. There was a case that recently came out that a city manager was using a, I believe it was a Facebook account and speaking a lot about public business, but then blocking certain members of the public who were trying to comment on public business. And the courts did find that since it was a traditional public forum, yeah, there was First Amendment protections and so the city manager could not block folks from, from speech on their platforms. So I think the answer is yes, they're, they are public forums, so they can be public forums, you can have your own personal accounts. I think the communications division is working on some guidance on that, that goes over best practices.
Yes, yes, Tammy is working on, coming back to all of council and kind, and having that conversation about what your private social media account versus maybe your public social media account, some of those implications that we're learning as we get into this world that we've had for a while, but now we're all learning lessons from it, so we have her scheduled, not yet scheduled, but too soon.
And I think some of the guidance is to, to avoid turning your private social media accounts into a public social media account under some of the recent court guidance, so that's kind of an evolving area right now.
Because the city doesn't have any social media accounts on our behalf, so any accounts we have are all personal nature. Okay, thank you. Other than the mayor's, he has...
Hold on, we got, Hampton?
Is your question also, can we all be friends on a platform? And is that okay? But we can't talk about anything city-related if we all are commenting on each other's posts or things like that.
I think you probably, that's getting into that gray danger zone, if you start commenting and discussing or liking items that are pending city business.
Yeah, I'm familiar as a financial advisor, I was curious, I was curious how it is city-wise, so.
Not necessarily city business, how about, you know, takes the kids for a hike in the national forest, you know, I like it.
That's fine.
That's a very, pretty, is that fine?
It's not city business.
It's not city business, it's personal, okay.
Yeah, but you risk converting that private, that private social media account to a public account once you start talking about public business.
No, I understand that, but you stay away from public business.
Right.
Gotcha.
Okay. Okay. All right. And again, I think we touched upon that, any emails that reach more than a quorum of the public body, that you're starting to have a meeting, you need to follow the requirements of the open meeting law. Can't take any legal action, say I'm in favor of item B on next week's agenda, what does everybody else think about that? Clearly, that's where you're starting to get a foul of the open meeting law. Not usually an issue, but just a good reminder.
Go ahead.
I have a question about this. This is a big one, because this just recently happened to us. The Attorney General is saying something very different than you're saying. So can you explain why you say one thing and the Attorney General is saying another? Because Winnett was just telling us about this.
We're going to be doing that.
We're going to talk about that at length in the next meeting, if you don't mind.
We've got an executive session coming up.
Oh, we do have something on that, because that is an issue, I think.
I, we are going to talk about that, yes.
We're going to talk about that after.
Well, that's my question, that's why.
It's an issue.
Thank you.
It should be very spirited.
It should be.
All right.
Also, I would mention to all of you, you know, if you get upset at something, because we do have people, you know, checking emails and all that kind of stuff, we have 24 hours to send your email out.
Yes, you can.
Always. Calm down, and after 24 hours, then send your email, because there's people that are checking that all the time, so just be careful.
Yeah, the one, other things you want to watch on emails, it's a serial meeting, you email Councilmember B, who emails Councilmember C, and you don't know about that, and you email Councilmember D, that's where you get into those serial meeting scenarios. Got to be careful with that, and the reply-alls is always problematic.
Councilmember Terry's got a question.
Thank you, Mayor. Rourke, you mentioned about social media and public business, just wanted to ask, you know, since you're the lawyer here, the definition of public business, for example, obviously anything coming up on a potential agenda item, but is, hey, it's a great day to be in Goodyear. Does that constitute public business, because it's referencing kind of the city of Goodyear and our role?
I would say, in that context, no, but it's always a slippery slope. I mean, the open meeting law talks about legal action, proposing, deliberating, or taking legal action. Legal action is an official act of the city body. So if you're saying, it's a great day to be in Goodyear, come out to Goodyear, it's going to be a great day at the ballpark of Goodyear, that should not be. But, again, you always have the perceptions. And then if you speak too much about public, in your public capacity, on your private social media account, you run the risk of then you have folks start commenting on that, right? And then you may not like what they're commenting on, but you've held yourself out to be this public official, and then now you've converted your private social media account to this public forum, and then maybe they have protections under the First Amendment to make statements on your private account that you may not like. So there's a case directly on point that just came out on that. It's interesting, it's an evolving area of law, and I'm admittedly not an expert in it.
Okay, thank you. The string of scenarios that you mentioned there, what's kind of the purpose of it is of my question of what constitutes.
Did you have something else?
Yes. When taking a vote on the Council, that's something that we do between us, how many people between the Mayor and those Council members should be talked to at that point? Like, I'm going to take a vote on something, and I'm talking to the Mayor about it, how many people can I talk to then about that?
Once you get to a quorum, which is four or more, you need to be operating under the open meeting law, and have the posted agenda, and have the discussion in public.
So legally, I cannot talk to more than four people?
Once you hit four, four is the magic number.
And you're one of the three.
And you're one of the three. So if I want Laura to go along with me on something, then I'm one of the three, and I can talk to Laura and one other person.
That's it.
Otherwise, that's violating the open meeting law.
Correct.
Interesting.
Yeah, but she can't talk to Laura.
That's the risk.
She said, because then you're over the top.
Right, to get somebody else to vote the way we want them to vote.
The best public policy is always have the discussions in public following the open meeting law, but I understand your question, and the answer is a hard three, but remember, one of those three may talk to somebody else, and then you have a problem.
That's what I thought, thank you very much.
Yeah, because you can't control what the others are talking about, and that puts it over the top, so.
No, you can't, that's right.
All right, keep going.
All right, let's go, what's the next one here? Yep, we just talked about that. Yep, just remind you that all of your emails are public documents, they're open for public inspection. Mayor, you referenced earlier, and I would echo, that utilize your city email accounts, it's the best way to make sure we're in full compliance with the public records laws, and if we ever need them, subject to public records law, they're easy for us to obtain, and we don't have to bother you. Also, there's litigation holds, the city, you know, we're involved in litigation from time to time, we have a duty to preserve matters related to that litigation, and a lot of times that involves getting your A subject person's computer, and either pulling the hard drive or imaging the hard drive. If you're doing that on your private device, that's, we don't like to ask to do that. Luckily, we typically, that doesn't involve Council, but we do have occasions in litigation where we do need to take the electronic devices, so best practice, always do it on city devices.
That's why I mentioned earlier, don't use your personal email to respond to any city business. Yeah, but don't respond.
Yeah, clarify, like, if the city sends me a calendar invite to my personal email.
They shouldn't.
I can calendar that to my personal, but I can't respond back and say, hey, I need you to do something else. If the email's coming, I can't control what people send to me.
Right.
But I can control that I can respond back to it, so it's not a violation if the city is sending me information, I just can't respond back to that information.
Right, I, either sending or receiving, best practice is to use city emails, city devices. That way, we always capture it, and we don't have to bother you.
And I would hope that the city, anything to do with city business is going to your city email, that's why I mentioned earlier, check your city email, they're not sending it to your person, because you don't want to get in that back and forth, you get yourself in trouble.
But we do have the occasion where all of a sudden, something hasn't come to our city email, we've made mention of it, and it's at the last minute, and we will, okay, send it, text me, or do something, because I didn't get it, and I need to know the information. There is the occasional that that happens, like as in with anything.
I'm sure it does.
Correct? It's not like you're doing it all the time.
Yeah, no, but you just got to be careful that you don't get yourself in a jam. Go ahead.
Okay, now we're moving on to the city ethics policy. Just going to high-level review the city ethics handbook, I think you all have a copy of this, it's attached to tonight's presentation. Just a little bit of background on that, that was written by a Citizens Advisory Committee back in 2010, 2011, there were 11 members on that committee, and met for about a year, and outlined ethics as they thought should be applied to city, public bodies, city staff, so it applies uniformly across the organization. And one of the requirements that was adopted by Council through the ethics policy is that there's annual training, so this will serve as that annual training this evening, so I'm just going to hit high-level, what the citizens wrote in that ethics policy that was adopted by the Council. Most of what they pulled from was state statutes, and they also looked at ethics policies from other cities in developing this handbook. First one? First one is basically conflict of interest law, and that is from Arizona State statute, most of what's incorporated into the ethics handbook is verbatim from the state statutes, and as it applies to a city council member, if you have a conflict of interest in any city action item or any city contract, you are prohibited by law from voting on that item or participating in any manner in that item. And just boiling it down, you have a conflict of interest in an action item if you have a monetary interest in it, and that's defined as a specific interest under statute, and not a remote interest. So if there's an item that's coming in front of the Council that affects you or a family member, and that can be kids, grandkids, parents, brothers, sisters, then you have a conflict of interest under Arizona statute, and you have to accuse yourself from acting on that item.
Just to highlight on that work, it's monetary interest, for example, some of us are nonprofit 501(c) corporations, all right? That does not apply.
That does not apply, that's under the Arizona statute, they specifically exempt nonprofit.
Yeah. Just wanted to throw that out to everybody.
Best practice, if you have a conflict of interest, an ongoing conflict of interest, that's happened occasionally over the years, say you're employed by a company that does a lot of business in the city, that regularly comes in front of the city, best practice is to file a conflict of interest form with the city clerk's office, just says, in relation to any item having to do with Company X, I have a conflict of interest, or my husband works for Company X, so I'll have a conflict of interest. That just makes the city staff aware that you have that conflict of interest, so we can avoid avoiding you in any matters that may put you contrary to the conflict of interest laws. And Councilmembers, over the years, have filed those on occasion. Any questions on conflict of interest law? It's, kind of can get kind of convoluted, but really, just if you're employed, you have to own a significant amount of stock in a company before you really have a conflict of interest, I mean, sometimes that question comes up. You have to own more than 3% of the company's stock, and it has to be more than 5% of your annual income before you have a conflict of interest under the Arizona statutes. All right, moving on, let's see, we talked about, the ethics handbook does talk about as an elected or appointed official, you're going to have access to information that the normal public doesn't have access to, and the handbook talks about respecting confidentially that information and not improperly acting upon that information, certainly not an issue we've had over the years, but it's certain, it's something that's highlighted in the handbook. So moving on. Gifts or questions that comes up with some frequency? The handbook just does talk about that, on occasion, gifts, gifts is defined very broadly, you know, sometimes you're asked to lunch, or meetings, or entertainment, it just outlines under what context you can accept those gifts from the public, and really, you just make that evaluation of, does it improperly influence your decision-making, how it would be viewed by the public? That's what the ethics handbook speaks about. Under state statute, you can't, cannot accept entertainment from a registered lobbyist, that's just an issue that comes up on occasion, that if the lobbyist from ABC Company wants to take you to the Super Bowl, you cannot accept that, even if you fill out a gift declaration form, that's just illegal under the state statute.
Registered lobbyist?
A registered lobbyist.
You're like, what did it mean, registered?
Okay. The state statute talks about registered lobbyists, so that's, I'd point you to the state statute on that. The ethics policy does say if the valuation of a gift received is over $80, you need to fill out a gift declaration form, and you file it with the city clerk's office. Okay? Handbook also talks about undue influence, that's, I am using influence of office, or as a city staff person to influences others through an improper power balance, to take actions that wouldn't otherwise be inclined to, not something that normally comes up, but is a section in the ethics handbook, and so wanted to touch on that this evening. Next, shall I use your position to use public resources that the public's not otherwise entitled to? Don't take your city car and go on vacation, you know, don't go pick out a truck and move your family over the weekend, not issues we have, but those are some of the discussion points that are in the, at the ethics handbook. Moving on. And again, just more, more discussion points, this is all language that's directly out of the ethics handbook, and I'm not going to read it verbatim, but that's, this is the verbiage that that Citizens Committee drew upon and polished in the course of their And just wrapping up, next one? No, no, previous. Just as far as the ethics handbook, there are ways to report violations of the ethics policy, there's a whistleblower hotline, and the number is listed in the ethics handbook, and I am named as the city ethics officer, so any ethics complaints come to me, and then they're handled, in whatever manner is outlined in the ethics handbook. They can be referred out for investigation, they can be referred to the human resources department, if that's appropriate, but there is a mechanism in the ethics handbook for handling any ethics complaints, and we really haven't had a whole lot over the years, way back when we had a couple, but it's just not something we encounter, so we're in pretty good shape in that department. And that is the end of my conversation, any questions about the ethics policies, or open meeting laws, public records?
I have a couple of questions on the executive sessions, they're all confidential.
Correct.
Would you talk about that, please?
The tenet of the executive session is those, certain categories can be discussed outside of the public, and the subject matter cannot be disclosed later on, there are minutes taken, they are filed under seal with the city clerk's office, but the discussions and the subject matter cannot be discussed outside of the executive session by law.
Okay, and my second question was for committees, and like you've commissioned, do they have to have a public comment period during their meetings, or can they elect not to do that?
They can elect not to, there's never a requirement to have a public comment section, usually that's contained in the various committees' bylaws.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Gillis?
This is something that I think is really important for us to remember, on the dais, having a professional look up there. Who takes care of the voting, when the voting, like last week, when we were supposed to vote, and it was such a cluster? Who takes care of that voting? Is it Jasmine? Is it you? Is it Winnett? Who is it that says, okay, let's vote one by one, and let's not talk about amongst ourselves how we're going to vote? Let's take a vote, put it down, be done. Who does that?
Procedurally, go ahead Jasmine, if you like.
Mayor, Councilmember Gillis, so procedurally, we use the electronic voting system, and so unless required by a rule called voice vote, or some other specific statute, we would use, I would enable that voting, once a motion and second, discussion would take place among Council, and the Mayor would then request the clerk to open the voting.
Let's make sure we do that from now on, because we didn't last week, and several people from the audience made comment of it, and I got several phone calls from people that were watching online, because the Mayor kept saying, what are we doing? I mean, it's not his issue, somebody else should have been saying, this is how we do it, let's take the vote. He didn't know, we didn't know, it was very confusing, and I think we need to be very professional, we looked very unprofessional last week. So let's make sure we do that in the future.
Make sure to outline it in the script.
Typically, we won't have that problem if it's electronically, it's just that we didn't have it, like, the things weren't up last night, on that vote.
They weren't up?
No, the electronic wasn't.
I was using mine, I mean, they weren't up that night?
No, not for the vote, no.
Well, it should have been handled more professionally, because it was not, whether we had it or not.
Okay, I respectfully disagree, but.
Mine is going to.
Okay. So we can agree to disagree. Okay. Next.
All right, in front of you, I've dropped off copies of the governance relation system. I chose to do paper copies, it's kind of easier to follow along. This document is attached to my contract, and was attached to the previous city manager's contract, so I thought it was good to go over this particular document, because we do know we operate under a council manager form of government, but what exactly does that mean? We know that council sets policy, the city manager operationalizes that policy direction, but are there different things that we might be interested in, or expectations that we want to align ourselves with, of expectations of the organization, the city manager, and the Council? So we have been using this document for probably, I say, about at least five or, four or five years.
Hold on, go ahead.
We change it from example to our actual?
This is copyrighted by the Bridge Group and LLC, and we are allowed to use it as long as I let you know that it is a copyrighted document, so I would have to get with them and make sure that we could change it, but it is an example, it provides examples of types of expectations of the different, the city manager, the Council, and the organization. The intent of this is to better understand the roles and responsibilities, so we can continuously improve governance relations. That's the goal. So there are four areas in this document, there's the expectations of the organization, of the chief executive, or the city manager, of the board, or what we call the city council, and then customer service and civic engagement. So I am not going to go into depth a lot of this, but I do want to kind of go through some of the expectations. Again, this is part of my contract, so in previous conversations, the Council has agreed to this document, I've agreed to it as part of my contract, so I think it's important that everyone, we kind of review that every once in a while, and I am going to go horse, so I hopefully make it through this. And I'm going to go hoarse, so I hopefully make it through this. So, if you go to page three, the expectations of the organization. In high level, there are expectations this outlines for having a strategic plan, which we do, that the organization is an open book to the employees. We communicate information that's not confidential, but we do communicate as much as we can with all of employees. Executive management team works to develop and empower employees, and we do that in a variety of ways, but always open to more suggestions. But continually looking at empowering and developing our employees. Improving technology, that's an expectation for the organization. Be a regional model for board governance. Continuously improve internal processes and procedures. Being good stewards of the public money and trust. And again, a lot of this stuff is in my evaluation. So, as some of you already know, you've been through my evaluation for the two members. You'll get to see a copy of that. It's at the end of the year that I'm evaluated. And many of these things are incorporated into that document. Focus on developing a learning organization. Recognize internal stakeholders, our customers. We treat each other as customers, and we focus on innovation and transparency. So, that's the first section, expectations of the organization. The second one, a little longer in that, in the expectations, because that's the expectations of the city manager. So, I am to implement that strategic, those strategic plans. Assist the council with their policymaking role. Written information provided to one council member will be provided to all council members. So, you'll often see that in the manager's memo on Fridays. You'll see that, Brandon, I'm going to use you, Councilmember Brandon Hampton, asked this question. Here's the response, so that you all get to see the response. I give Brandon the response first, as a one-on-one, and then everyone gets that answer. Plan ahead and anticipate needs and recognize potential problems. Implement city council policy regarding expenditures and good financial management. We have the financial policies that we adhere to. Budget recommendations. My recommendation should come to you with data or rationale as to why I'm recommending those particular items. Respect the council's decisions. Collaborative leadership. Ensure positive and supportive physical and emotional working conditions, and foster teamwork in high-performing teams. I'm also responsible to recognize citizens as our customers. Agenda materials. Making sure that they're concise, accurate, and meaningful for all of you. And that is something that we are continuing to work on. I think there are opportunities there for us to make sure we're giving you the information you need to make good decisions. Value intergovernmental relations. Communicate effectively. There are a variety of ways that I communicate with you, through one-on-one meetings, which we have set up with each and every one of you, agenda items. And if I need to, I'll give you a phone call real quick, to just make sure I get that quick hit. A proactive management style, effective leadership. Negotiate effectively. We negotiate a lot of contracts on real estate, or maybe it's with the associations, the unions. There are a variety of things that we negotiate. I always bring in my law partners here to make sure that it's legal. And we always want to make sure we're negotiating in the best interest of our citizens. This other one is a biggie, no operational surprises. I should not be surprising you, and you shouldn't be surprising me with anything. It's that open transparency between the governing board and the city manager. I'll move on to the governing board, or the expectations of the council, that we have discussed previously. But Trey and Anita, you haven't probably even seen this document before. So, governing board, value each other's opinions. Do your homework ahead of time. We provide the agenda to you five, and the documents five days in advance. So, you do have time to read it and digest it before the meetings. No surprises at the meeting for staff. So, if you have questions about the agenda, or something that you want to ask, I want you to ask those. And I encourage you to go to the individual who's bringing that item before council. And you may not know that individual, if you're new to council. So, please come to me, or any one of the executive team, which are the deputy city managers, and ask your question. And then, please ask it again at the dais. But this way, we are better able to answer your question then. So, if there's no surprises, we have that ability to give you the answer that you're seeking, so the public has that understanding. Disagree with the vote, but do not undermine the will of the council. Practice civility amongst each other. Support the strategic plan. No public criticism of staff at meetings. So, please.
Say that again.
No public criticism of staff at meetings. So, if you have issues with staff, please talk to me, Keeney, or Justin. Let us know, we'll handle it that way, but no public criticism of staff at meetings.
On the dais?
On the dais. No operational interference. So, council sets policy, I direct staff. So, council does not direct staff. I direct it with the help of my executive team and directors. So, that's what no operational interference means. Focus on outcomes, not positions. And last, but definitely not least, is the customer service and civic engagement. We work hard to provide timely responses to our citizens when we get those emails, turning them around within 24, most of the time 24 hours, with a response that you all see, if you're all copied on that email. Provide opportunities to increase citizen engagement. We do look for various ways to do that. Educate citizens on services. And make sure that we provide accurate information. So, that's it really quickly. We go through it. Generally, we go through it at my evaluation. And again, there are items in my evaluation from this document that I get evaluated on at the end of the year. But please know that, don't have to wait until the end of the year. If you have comments, questions, concerns around this document, we found it to be very beneficial in, as we go through the year, or in those conversations at my evaluation, because it helps to better identify those roles and responsibilities, and really sets us up for a good governance relationship between council and the city management. So, I'm open for any questions.
Any questions of the manager?
Pretty straightforward, all right.
So, we got another one up?
We do, we're just going down the line here, thank you.
All right. Mayor and members of the council, good evening. I'm Jenna Goode, the Assistant to the City Manager. I recognize this has been a long discussion, and I am the last part of this topic. So, I will try to be.
Jenna, can I? Oh, no, not the legislative one. I do want to add that also in my goals, just to reinforce it, I think I mentioned at the beginning, was identifying the roles and responsibilities of the council assistants. The mayor has one assistant to the mayor, and then we have two council assistants, Janet and Lorena, who support three council members each. And so, in my goal this year was to review those roles and responsibilities. And then, in my one-on-ones, I'll follow up with you to see if there's anything more that we should do around this. So, I've asked Jenna to go through that information tonight.
Thank you, Winnet, Mayor, members of the council. As council is aware, the city manager has designated staff to support the council in filling their roles here with the city. The mayor and council office is essentially a division within the city manager's office, consisting of four full-time staff, including one executive assistant, two council assistants, and an assistant to the mayor. The division reports to myself, the assistant to the city manager, and then, of course, ultimately, to the city manager. I'm going to provide a quick overview of the role of the different members of the team, but I also want to point out that the full job descriptions were also included in the agenda packet. First, we have got our wonderful executive assistant, Cindy. As the executive assistant, she supports all seven members of the council, and also the other staff in the division, by handling most of the administrative items. This includes coordinating event invitations, and tracking RSVPs, ordering office supplies, preparing proclamations, tracking the mayor and council office budget, and making travel arrangements and meeting arrangements. As Winnet mentioned, we also have two council assistants, Lorena and Janet, as you see there, who are each assigned to support three members of the council. The council assistants provide a variety of support to the council in fulfilling their role as council members with the city. The primary duties include correspondence and constituent responses, serving as a liaison between the public, and also with city departments, preparing for attending and following up for city council meetings, work sessions, and other city-related events, typically during regular business hours, drafting information points or speeches, and also conducting research. We also then have Rosalva, the assistant to the mayor, who provides all of that same support to the mayor, in addition to serving as a supervisor for the other three staff, ensuring that the office has coverage due to absences, and ensuring that the council's needs for support are being met. In addition, the assistant to the mayor also oversees larger projects, such as new council member orientation and the mayor's State of the City event. In addition to the job descriptions, there are a number of policies or guidelines that apply to all city employees, that provide additional guidance on the appropriate role for staff. For example, state and federal laws prohibit city staff from conducting any campaign or election-related activities on city time or using city resources. Staff can also not engage in any activities that are of a personal nature or a business-related matter, as opposed to something related to city business. And of course, staff cannot engage in any activities that would violate any of our other guidelines or policies, for example, our HR policies or IT policies that apply to all of the staff. Within these boundaries, council members have wide discretion in determining what type of support they need in fulfilling their role as a city council member. And council can always contact myself, Rosalva, or of course, the city manager, if they have any concerns about the support that they're receiving. And so, with that, I would be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Open it up. I don't see anything.
Not so much a question, but a comment. I just wanted to thank you and your staff for the transition over the last few weeks and few months. Prior, I've felt like any question I have, had somebody to go to, and, you know, just wanted to thank you for, not only yourselves, but the staff everyone mentioned so far.
I appreciate that, it's a great team.
Anything else? All right, batter up.
We, as we kind of transition here, we're, as I mentioned, it's that time of year where we need to talk about federal and state legislative agendas, and.
This is the fun stuff.
Oh, sure, yeah, it is, it is. And we have our experts here to walk us through kind of what happened last year, what's coming up. And they have a handout for all of you. Oh, sorry. So, Jenna, if you want to go ahead while Haley's passing out the documents, that would be good. No, they're always on.
They're always on, okay. Mayor and council, for the record, Jenna Carrico, Chief Government Affairs Officer. And I have with me here tonight Haley Ralph, our Government Relations Coordinator. And as Winnet said, we are honored to be here to present your 2025 federal and state legislative agendas. As you know, today marks the opening day of the 57th Legislature First Regular Session, and each year, we come before you, mayor and council, for approval of the agenda that Haley's passing out, which helps define the city's legislative priorities, and helps us when deciding on how to weigh in on bills of interest at the Capitol. Before we get into a debrief of last session, the election cycle, and what to expect next year, we'll provide an overview of how our team works on behalf of the city to execute the legislative agenda in front of you tonight. We are proud to introduce a more elevated version of the proposed legislative agenda for 2025. Haley did some incredible work with the design here. At your place, as Haley's just passed out, there's a one-pager and more detailed two-pager, intended to be used as leave-behinds for meetings with community partners and legislative leaders. We have an opportunity for questions at the end, but please feel free to interrupt at any time if there's something you'd like to discuss, or we can help clarify. The mission of Government Relations is to advance and protect the interests of Goodyear residents as represented by the mayor and council. Each of you serve tirelessly to advocate for your community in many ways. Shown here are a few examples of the federal, state, and regional entities in which Goodyear has mayor or council representation. These roles are crucial to ensuring that Goodyear has a seat at the table during policy development, future planning, and regional coordination. Our team works under your leadership with each of these entities to ensure Goodyear's priorities are represented and executed. We advocate for Goodyear's priorities at the federal, state, and regional levels, which is why this time of year, you see less and less of us around City Hall, because Haley and I spend over half the week between the State Capitol, League, and other regional entities. I am the city's designated public lobbyist, and Haley is an authorized public lobbyist. These registrations allow us to legally register formal positions on proposed legislation and advocate on the city's behalf. With your support, I also manage specialized contractors at the federal and state level that assist us in successfully completing our mission. There is nothing more important in our roles than communication. We operate under the golden rule of no surprises. So, you might not always like the news we have to deliver, but we prefer that you hear it from us. During the legislative session, we provide regular communication to mayor and council via weekly updates, but we're always available and accessible for one-on-one meetings or any other forum that you prefer to receive your legislative news. We constantly coordinate with other city intergubs and staff from the League of Arizona Cities and Towns to review the bills that impact local operations. Our strong engagement ensures Goodyear's concerns are represented amongst our peers. Before we get to that meeting, the Goodyear team reviews every bill as it gets introduced, and seeks the input of the appropriate department director for more in-depth analysis. We engage with lawmakers, staff, and our counterparts to convey Goodyear's position and work towards compromise where there's a path forward. In those circumstances where a compromise solution cannot be reached, we oppose bills that are a detriment to our primary tenet of local control or otherwise do not align with our legislative agenda. Through all these efforts, we constantly strategize with all of our stakeholders described, but most importantly, our Goodyear team, mayor, council, and management, and all of our department leaders. We would not be as successful without all of these cogs working together to reach our shared mission of a thriving Goodyear. During the 160 days of the 2024 legislative session, 1,660 bills were introduced, and 332 were transmitted to the governor's desk. Of those, Governor Hobbs signed 259 and vetoed 73. Government relations actively tracked 314 of the introduced bills that had a direct or indirect impact on local operations. As you all are very familiar, the primary legislative issue of last session concerned affordable housing and zoning reform. One of the most contentious bills before the legislature found itself in House Bill 2570, dubbed the Starter Home Act. Framed by home builders as a solution to the affordability crisis, affordable housing crisis, in reality, had no requirements for affordability, and would have deregulated the home-building industry, allowing developers to build anything by right without local approval. Despite our best efforts, the bill narrowly passed with a bipartisan coalition, and was sent to the governor's desk. On March 14th, Mayor Pizzillo joined mayors from across the state in a press conference urging Governor Hobbs to veto the bill. Thanks to the robust engagement to the governor's office voiced by you all and our community leaders, the governor heard our concerns and vetoed the bill. Throughout session, Governor Hobbs encouraged legislators to work on balanced and responsible affordable housing bills, and to that end, signed four bills last year related to middle housing, accessory dwelling units, or backyard casitas, reporting requirements, and adaptive reuse for commercial buildings. Of course. Our Development Services Director, Katie Wilkin, and her team have been busy at work to help implement these new laws, some of which the council's already taken action on. The session saw the introduction of nearly 100 water-related bills as the executive and legislators both attempted to respond to the Department of Water Resources' recent groundwater model, as well as the upcoming federal negotiations surrounding the Colorado River negotiations. Through partnership with the Arizona Municipal Water Users Association and our Water Services Team, Goodyear strives to protect our existing resources while supporting thoughtful and balanced approaches to water management throughout the state. Thanks to these great partnerships, we are pleased to report that no water laws opposed by AMO were signed into law. This year, lawmakers were in a very different budgetary mindset than the year prior, as they had to unwind billings. they had to unwind billions of dollars in one-time spending to address a nearly $2 billion budget shortfall. Most of the projects that were funded the year before got delayed into future years or eliminated altogether. As cities continue to grapple with the loss of residential rental beginning this year, there were no other direct budget hits to municipal revenues last session, although we will face indirect hits through state agency cuts and other sweeps like the $300 million swept from the Water Infrastructure Finance Authority, which Goodyear has been grant recipient. As you likely recall, Governor Hobbs and Attorney General Mays announced ongoing FBI investigations into sober living home fraudulent billing practices that revealed rampant misconduct and abuse throughout the system that has impacted our most vulnerable populations. Communities across the state have seen a tremendous uptick in unlicensed fraudulent sober living homes under the current structure within the Arizona Department of Health Services. Goodyear is fortunate to have sober living home experts in Officer Scott Daniel and Fire Administrator Ashley Troyer, who have been tremendous assets in helping us develop pathways towards reform, but as you all know, it's a difficult path forward. Navigating limitations caused by the Federal Fair Housing Act and state statutory preemptions, Mayor and Council, you all took the reins as leaders in the West Valley to help manage facilities that are out of compliance, but we still need more tools in the toolbox to be able to do more legally. Last session, surprise legislator Frank Carroll championed the league's sober living home proposal, Senate Bill 1361, that attempted to address fraudulent sober living home activity by instituting transparent licensure requirements, standards, and penalties for violations. Unfortunately, this bipartisan effort did not make it across the finish line last year, but in good news, the West Valley has been working with Senator Carroll to support his introduction of this bill again, as we'll get into in a few slides. Before then, I'll hand it over to Haley to cover the election cycle and how it's impacted Goodyear's representation.
Mayor and Council, thank you so much for having us here tonight. In looking at the November 2024 election results, this past November was nothing short of historic, as the reelection of President Donald Trump ushered in a massive red wave across the country. However, election results in Arizona continue to prove our status as a swing state, with Democrats maintaining a federal majority and Republicans expanding their state majority. Former Democratic Congressman Ruben Gallego has joined current Senator Mark Kelly to represent Arizona in the Senate for a six-year term. Kelly, who was not up for reelection this cycle, will continue to serve his term as senior senator until 2029. In the House of Representatives, incumbents in both districts representing Goodyear, CD7 and CD9, won their reelection, so Raoul Gravala, a Democrat, will serve another two-year term to represent CD7, while Paul Gosar, a Republican, is set to serve another term representing CD9. Republicans were not only able to defend their majority within both state chambers, but were successful in expanding their caucus majority as a whole. Republicans now hold a 17-13 margin in the Senate and a 33-27 majority in the House. We do have a few new faces representing Goodyear at the state legislature in Districts 25 and 29 that we'll be able to see in just a few more slides. On top of that, we are also excited to see such robust Goodyear and West Valley representation reflected within majority and minority leadership at the legislature. In the Senate, LD29 Goodyear Senator Janay Champ is serving as the Majority Leader alongside LD28 surprise Senator Frank Carroll, who will serve as the Majority Whip. In the House, our very own LD29 Representative and Goodyear resident, Steve Montenegro, is serving as Speaker of the House, and our LD25 Representative, Michael Carbone, is serving as the House Majority Leader. We also, looking to the Democrat minority leadership, we have Democrat, sorry, excuse me, we have West Valley representation with LD26 Glendale legislators, Senator Flavio Bravo, and Representative Quanta Cruz. Senator Bravo serves as the co-minority leader in the Democrat caucus in the Senate, and Representative Cruz serves as the co-minority whip for the House Democrats. We are very excited in that these leadership positions will ensure that the West Valley is positioned for success at the Capitol. Following the 2021 redistricting, Goodyear is made up of four legislative districts, LD22, 23, 25, and 29. With each district being represented by two House members and one Senate member, a total of 12 legislators currently represent Goodyear at the Capitol. Over the next few slides, we'll go into further discussion of each district and its political representation. Thank you. LD22 is a Democrat stronghold primarily made up of Avondale, but it does clip portions of Goodyear's Austraia Mountain Regional Park. The district reelected all of their former Democrat legislators and will continue to be represented by Senator Eva Diaz and Representatives Lupe Concheras and Elda Luna Nahara. LD23 is what we consider our swing district, and will continue to have a split-party representation at the legislature after they reelected all of their former representatives, and will continue to be represented by Democrats Senator Brian Fernandez and Representative Mariana Sandoval, with Republican Representative Michelle Pena. The district encompasses Goodyear south of the I-10 and goes all the way down into Buckeye, Yuma, and even parts of Tucson. North of the 10 and west of the 303, we have Republican-held District LD25, where former Representative Tim Dunn secured the Senate seat left vacant by former Senate Majority Whip Seena Kerr. Re-elected Representative Michael Carbone, as we mentioned earlier, will serve as the House Majority Leader, and will be joined, and has been joined as of today, the Republican newcomer Nicholas Pepper. And last but not least, we have the Republican-controlled LD29, located north of the 10. Senator Champ and Representative Montenegro were both reelected, and as we discussed, both have been nominated for leadership positions, with Montenegro serving as Speaker and Janay Champ as Majority Leader. Representative Montenegro will be joined by his running mate, newcomer Representative James Taylor. Going into ballot measures now, voters also saw a lengthy ballot last November, in large part due to an unprecedented number amount of ballot referrals sent by the legislature, most of which, as I was saying, were sent by the Republican legislature in the tactic to bypass the threat of Democrat Governor Hobbs' veto. To that end, there were 11 statewide legislative referrals, with only four passing with the majority voter approval. Of the four, two have a local impact, with Prop 312, which is the property tax refund for public nuisance, and Prop 314, which is the Border Security Act.
Hold it for a second. Is 312 in the courts right now?
Not yet, Mayor.
Not yet, but you expect that one to be in the courts?
Yeah, we imagine, Mayor, when a case comes forward that is applicable, that that's where that would end up.
That would end up being in the courts, okay. Go ahead.
Thank you. So there were two citizen-led initiatives that met the requirements to be placed on the ballot, and they met split fates. Prop 139, which was the Abortion Access Act, passed overwhelmingly, while Prop 140, the Make Elections Fair Act, failed by a similar margin in the opposite direction. Additionally, Maricopa County voters saw an overwhelmingly passed two countywide ballot measures. Prop 479, which we are all familiar and very excited about, which extended the region's transportation sales tax, and Prop 486, which increased Maricopa County Community Colleges' expenditure limit. We are, of course, particularly excited about the passage of Prop 479, as it will now allow the county's half-cent transportation sales tax to be extended for another 20 years. With these voter-approved revenue streams, the city is estimated to receive over $2 billion in direct transportation investments over the next 20 years, including securing the Goodyear-Avondale portion of the State Route 30, a southern I-10 reliever.
Thank you, Haley. As mentioned, each year prior to the beginning of the legislative session, we come before Mayor and Council to seek approval on what will be our guiding legislative principles for the year. These principles are centered around the priorities, vision, and mission of Mayor and Council, and assist our Government Relations Team in all of our efforts at the Capitol. Although not listed in priority order, you can see each tenet is of utmost importance to our city, preserving and pursuing local funding, protecting and enhancing water supply, and promoting economic development prosperity at the forefront of what we strive to do every day. As we review 2025 themes, you might feel like Groundhog's Day, because a lot of the top issues from last year will continue to be at the forefront of legislators' minds. The Goodyear team has been busy at work over the interim, which is what we call the time period between the end of one session and the start of the other, strengthening key relationships, building coalitions, and coordinating with other cities to develop strategies to address 2025's top issues. As we have mentioned, starting this year, Goodyear and many other communities around the state will grapple with the loss of residential rental tax. Thanks to the conservative budgeting and foresight of our council and city leadership, Goodyear has not yet had to raise taxes or cut essential services. However, we know Republican legislative leaders want to prioritize the tax cuts in the coming year, and some will be targeting food tax. So, sorry. Again, this local tax has nothing to impact state coffers, but would absolutely devastate some of Arizona's smallest cities and towns. For Goodyear, a food tax elimination or preemption would be another hit of more than $5 million a year, and would likely not be able to be absorbed without consequence. Fortunately, a group of rural lawmakers has reportedly penned a letter to leadership asking not to advance a food tax elimination because of this potentially devastating outcome. We'll be working with our legislators, the Governor's Office, and the League about Goodyear's impact and the potential consequences of continuing to chip away at local revenues. As for housing and zoning, we fully expect the homebuilders to introduce a revised version of House Bill 2570. This year, with the direction of Mayor Pizzillo's League Executive Committee, the League of Arizona Cities and Towns will be introducing their own housing bill to combat that effort. Government Relations has been coordinating with our DSD Department to ensure Goodyear's top priorities are addressed within this proposal, including but not limited to protecting design review at the top of the list. We will continue to regularly communicate with our neighborhood groups about housing bills through our action alerts, as well as equip our lawmakers with updates about the exciting development successes and commitment to continuous improvement for which Goodyear is so well-known. As we've mentioned, we expect Senator Carroll to introduce his sober living home bill again this year. We're proud to work, we're proud of the work Goodyear Mayor, Council, Police, and Fire alongside the League, Governor's Office, DHS, and the legislature has done in good faith to see this compromise come to fruition, and we will work vigilantly to see a different outcome. This year, our Mayor and Council championed two resolutions that are officially part of the League of Cities and Towns 2025 legislative priorities. Government Relations works with our department leaders and each of you every year to consider potential policy issues, changes, or new ideas to bring to the legislature. In the five years I've been here, we have successfully passed four Goodyear priorities into law, two of which went through the League resolution process. We are one of the most successful and active cities for passing individual priorities, thanks in large part to your thoughtful and collaborative approaches to policy. The first of our resolutions this year urged the League and the legislature to proactively seek solutions to offset the loss of revenue funds from the residential rental repeal and preserve current revenue streams. These efforts will be most successful during the budget, the budget process and conversation. The second proposal addresses an inconsistency within campaign finance laws. Current law prohibits local candidate committees from transferring their contributions to run for higher office. Statewide and legislative candidates do not have that same prohibition when running for local office. This disparity creates a disadvantage for local candidates from running for state or legislative office, and ultimately limits the number of candidates with local experience to advocate for the city's needs. We are actively working with former East Valley Councilmember and new legislator Jeff Weninger to sponsor this bill. We expect to see it officially introduced early this week. There is no voice more powerful at our state legislature than of our residents, and over the last five years, we have worked with your support to increase engagement and communication with residents. Every year, we host Lead Day at the Capitol to allow graduates of our Leadership Academy the opportunity to learn more about the legislative process, hear directly from their legislators, and learn more about how the city interacts and engages at this level. Last year, as mentioned, we also established quarterly legislative updates to subscribed residents and community leaders. Although regular updates go out quarterly, we also send action alerts on an as-needed basis to call for resident engagement directly with their legislators or the Governor's Office on bills of interest. We also want to focus this year on more updates to invite our legislators into the community. We have begun sending monthly emails to legislators with all of our community events to encourage their participation and continued relationship-building with you all and your shared constituencies. Please don't hesitate to let us know if you have other thoughts, requests, or ideas to discuss. That's all we have for you tonight. We're happy to answer any questions or go into more detail on anything that's been discussed.
Yeah, just keep us informed. I know that Senator Peterson wants some vote where it's 60% to do any increase in taxes. Let us know where that going. Last year had success. I know Nick's working on a lunch with the Speaker, and also, if you can, set up a lunch with Chad, the Governor's Chief of Staff. I prefer to work him at both ends to try to make sure that we have our protected, you know, our policies and a protected local control, so anything you can do to set that up, because I know we had that last year.
Absolutely.
It was helpful, and I know he's working on something with Steve, so that's gonna be nice for that lunch there.
Absolutely. The bill you referenced, Mayor, Senate Bill 1013, is on the government agenda for Wednesday, and we are signed in opposition, and we're working on a strategy with the League.
Okay. I just want to make sure we have a backstop on that, because I think that's an unfair... Also, I don't know if you, I'm sure you're familiar with Kate over at the city of Phoenix as a result of the rental tax. They're looking at a half-a-cent sales tax increase. So, I mean, their actions down there have consequences, unfortunately, so. I know they want to cut taxes, but in reality, what they've done is they caused the taxes at least in one city to go up. Yeah, you're just shifting it, so. All right, so we got some questions here. Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Yeah, I have more of a comment to make, actually. I want us to acknowledge District 8, Abe Hamaday, who won the US Congressional race. He is now serving on the Armed Service Committee as well as the Veteran Affairs Committee. I'm working on that back in Washington State, so I'm very excited to see about what he's doing. And he worked really hard when he ran for the Attorney General's race, so to see him win this race was exceptional. So I just want everybody to know, so if we have any veterans issues here, we will be able to go through Congressman Hamaday.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
I had the occasion to visit with some of our legislators on Saturday at great length, before they were all sworn in today. So the talk was that there might be some more bills on casitas. So keep your eye open, because then, I don't know what, they didn't seem to want to share too much information on that, but they were going to talk about the casitas. And also, I understand that the Speaker is interested in property rights, school choice, medical freedom, and all of that. I don't know what he's going to do with some of that. We can't seem to pin him down, but anyway, if you could just keep your eye on it, that would be great. And then, did you go to this swearing-in today? I didn't watch it on TV.
Yes, we did.
How was it?
It was great. So we'll, I know a lot of you are going to the Westmark Event on Wednesday for the State of the State. There was a heavy focus on, you know, affordable housing and affordable childcare, securing the southern border, so it was good news items, I think. She spoke about speaking, working collaboratively with cities and the state and other stakeholders on housing issues. I wrote down one of the quotes I really liked, actually. She said, "Arizona's are depending on us to find more common-sense solutions that don't expose our neighborhoods to untested experiments."
Right. Thank you.
You know, one of the things that I talked about early on, the affordable housing, that's why I would love to get, to talk to, when we're going to meet with the Speaker, and then also Chad on the Governor's Offices. Couple ideas. First of all, I know insurance seems to be a problem on some of the issues when it comes to duplexes and fourplexes. They can take a bill to get that off the table. That may help some of that spurring on. The other thing is, and I don't know why we don't do it, we have ground rent for commercial, but we don't have, you don't see much of it for residential, which means that you're renting the ground and then you're paying for the building, which helps bring the cost down for those. If you get rid of the insurance requirements for the duplexes and fourplexes, et cetera. If you can put those two together with some, maybe some funding for those to help to get lower, I think you might get there. But some of the things they're promoting, you know, like the ADAs and all that, that's not going to get you affordable housing. You know, I mean, it looks good, but it's not going to get you where they want to go, so. If you, you know, that's what I want to talk to them about, and you tell them when you set those appointments up to see if we can do, because I'm in favor of affordable housing, but make it affordable. Now, don't just put these pieces in there, that's not going to do anything. Anything else? Go ahead.
Will you touch on federal, our federal lobbyists and what their role is, and maybe even when we go to DC, what we can expect?
Yeah, absolutely. Mayor, Councilmember Keno, we've had the Nexus Consulting Group, Baum Homes, and ANMA on contract for almost a year now, so this will be our first NLC with them on board, so we're excited to see the change and how that, how we work with them and scheduling meetings. We're working on potential earmark priorities now. We haven't finalized anything, but you all will hear what we submit before portals open up in March. So we'll be working with them on a targeted strategy to work with each of those offices and make sure that we can try to get some more funding to the city through that route, and having boots on the ground in DC is really essential since Haley and I are here and, you know, makes a difference, as you all know, to be in person, having those conversations.
Anything else? Well, thank you. Just keep us informed of what's going on down there. I know it's always a fun time, right?
Always a fun time.
Yes, always a fun time.
Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Thank you. I guess there being, let's see, no further business to discuss. This meeting's adjourned, because we will now move into the executive... This meeting's adjourned, because we will now move into the executive special, special meeting. Now, the question is, should I show, go ahead and start that before we take a break?
Yep.
Didn't take a recess? Okay. Huh? It's going to be in here, but they got to get us ready here. Like to call a special meeting in order for January 13th. Bang the gavel there. City Clerk, please read the roll call.
Let the record reflect that all members are present.
Councilmember, everybody's here. Vote may be held to call an executive session for the following pursuant to ARS 38-431.03A3. Consultation with the city attorney to receive legal advice relating to the Arizona Open Meeting laws. I would like a motion and a second to go on an executive session.
So moved.
Okay, you got a motion and a second. Did you get that? We got a motion, Vice Mayor.
Thank you.
Okay, second from here. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it now. Will take us short, how about 10-minute break, everybody? Okay? All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. 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 Thank you.